Haryom, Om Shri Gurbionamaha. Good evening to all of you, little kids and their parents, friends and family. Happy Mahashivratri to all of you. And welcome you all to the Mahashivratri special session presented to you by Magic of Music. Now. Shiva Ratri represents the state of realization. Okay, Ratri represents darkness and Shiva is a personification of auspiciousness. Where Shiva is, Ratri is not. So in order to reach the highest state, every spiritual seeker is advised to do Upavasa and Jagaranah. Upa means near, Vasa means to stay. Therefore Upavasa not only means fasting but in a broader perspective, it means to stay connected with the higher god principle. Jagaranah means to be alert and aware, okay? Hence Upavasa and Jagaranah means to be constantly and consistently identified with the Lord and simultaneously to be in a state of your inner awareness. Okay, so that the mind does not move away from its focus. In this inner Upavasa Jagaranah state alone, the vision of the divine can take place and this is referred to as the Shivadarshanam. So today we are all here to remember Lord Shiva, to try to stay close to Lord Shiva through chanting Shlokas and singing the Shivabajans which we have learnt, right? Now let's get started with the Shlokas. The first one is the Shivastotram. This is the mantra of Lord Shiva which is found in the Rudram portion of the Vedas. It means I salute to the Lord. I salute to the... This is the Shivastotram. It means I salute the Lord who is the Lord of the universe, the Lord of the Lords, three-eyed one who destroyed the three cities, the waking dream and the deep sleep, the Lord of Time, Past, Present and Future, the Lord of Destruction, blue-necked one, the Master of Death, the Lord of all beings. To that great Lord is my pranams, my salutations. This is the Shivastotram. So let's chant this three times all of you, okay? Join your hands all of you and let's chant this. Namaste astu Bhagavan Vishveshwaraaya Mahadevaya Trayambakaya Tripurantakaya Trikagnikalaaya Kalagni Rudraya Neelakantaya Mrtjun Jayaya Sarveshwaraaya Sadashivaya Shreeman Mahadevaya Namaha. Namaste astu Bhagavan Vishveshwaraaya Mahadevaya Trayambakaya Tripurantakaya Trikagnikalaaya Kalagni Rudraya Neelakantaya Mrtjun Jayaya Sarveshwaraaya Sadashivaya Shreeman Mahadevaya Namaha. Namaste astu Bhagavan Vishveshwaraaya Mahadevaya Trayambakaya Tripurantakaya Trikagnikalaaya Kalagni Rudraya Neelakantaya Mrtjun Jayaya Sarveshwaraaya Sadashivaya Shreeman Mahadevaya Namaha. The next Shloka is the Mahamritjunjay mantra. It is also called the Rudra mantra, it is also called the Trayambakam mantra and at some times also called the Mrittyasanjivini mantra. It literally means the great death-defeating mantra. In the Vedas, it finds its place in three Vedas, Rigveda, Yajurveda and Atharvanaveda. What is the meaning of this mantra? We worship the three-eyed one who is fragrant and who nourishes all like the fruit falls off from the bondage of the stem, may we be liberated from debt, that is from mortality. Now here's the... Now let's chant this. Join your hands again. Om Trayambakam Yajamahé Sugandhim Pushtivardhannam Urvarukamivabhandhanan Mrtior Mukshiyamamritat. Om Trayambakam Yajamahé Sugandhim Pushtivardhannam Urvarukamivabhandhanan Mrtior Mukshiyamamritat. Om Trayambakam Yajamahé Sugandhim Pushtivardhannam Urvarukamivabhandhanan Mrtior Mukshiyamamritat. Now, the next Shloka. Before we go to the next Shloka, I want to tell you something about this Mahamritjunjay mantra. It has a lot of benefits. It's a collection of high-energy words when chanted in proper rhythm creates positive and divine vibrations around the body of the person who is chanting, which acts as a protective shield for the devotee. It's the life-saving mantra from untimely death or any fear. It has the power to give good health, wealth, peace, prosperity and salvation. It has been tested on patients when all medical treatments failed and chanting or playing the mantra allowed the patient, around the patient had done wonders in their lives. The divine vibrations of this mantra are not only for treating diseases but also it removes the fear, anxiety, the mental illness and keeps away from all the negative energy. So this mantra brings happiness, peace, calmness, consciousness in the mind of the chantor. So this Mahamritjunjay mantra is a life-saving mantra from untimely death or any kind of fear. Now let's go to the last Shloka which we're going to chant today, the Karacharana Kritam. This is a famous Shloka or actually a prayer for forgiveness where we're praying to Lord Shiva. This is a bedtime Shloka. It's a prayer to God Shiva asking him to excuse all our mistakes and maintain his mercy on us. Lord Shiva is known as Lord of Mercy and Compassion. So the meaning is, "Oh God kindly pardon my incorrect actions done consciously or unconsciously either through my different organs of action that is hand, feet and speech or through my organs of perception that is my eyes, ears or by my mind, I adore the God who is the ocean of kindness." That is Lord Shiva Shankara. Now let's chant this last Shloka. Ready all of you? Join your hands. Karacharana Kritamva Kayajamkarmajamba Shavanayanajamba Manasamba Paradhama Vihitamavihitamva Sarvamye Tatkshamasva Jaya Jaya Karunabhde Shri Mahadeva Shambho. Karacharana Kritamva Kayajamkarmajamba Shavanayanajamba Manasamba Paradhama Vihitamavihitamva Sarvamye Tatkshamasva Jaya Jaya Karunabhde Shri Mahadeva Shambho. Karacharana Kritamva Kayajamkarmajamba Shavanayanajamba Manasamba Paradhama Vihitamavihitamva Sarvamye Tatkshamasva Jaya Jaya Karunabhde Shri Mahadeva Shambho. So this was the chanting of the Shlokas. Now let's go... Let's go to the... Singing of the bajans which we have learnt. Let's start with the latest one that is Om Shiva Om Shiva. I hope you're all able to see my screen. Show me a thumbs up if you can see my screen. Are you all able to see my screen? Show me a thumbs up. Yes, thank you. Ready all of you? Om Shiva Om Shiva Parashiva Om Shiva Om Shiva Parashiva Om Kara Shiva Tavasharanam Om Kara Shiva Tavasharanam. Namami Shankara Bajami Shankara Namami Shankara Bajami Shankara Umamaheshwara Tavasharanam Umamaheshwara Tavasharanam. Gauri Shankara Shambho Shankara Gauri Shankara Shambho Shankara Saambhasada Shiva Tavasharanam Saambhasada Shiva Tavasharanam. Om Shiva Om Shiva Parashiva Om Kara Shiva Tavasharanam Namami Shankara Bajami Shankara Umamaheshwara Tavasharanam Gauri Shankara Shambho Shankara Saambhasada Shiva Tavasharanam Saambhasada Shiva Tavasharanam Saambhasada Shiva Tavasharanam. Now let's go to the next bajan. That is Shankara, Shankara Shiva Shankara, okay? I hope all of you are ready, shall we start this? One, two, three. Shankara Shiva Shankara Shiva Shankara Shambho Shankara Shiva Shankara Shiva Shankara Shambho Shankara Shiva Shankara Shiva Shambho Mahadeva Shankara Shiva Shankara Shiva Shambho Mahadeva Shankara Shiva Shankara Shiva Shankara Shambho. Dhamadhamadhamarupade Shankaradhanaadhana Ganta Vade Dhamadhamadhamarupade Shankaradhanaadhana Ganta Vade Harbolinathashambho Shiva Swaminathashambho Harharbolinathashambho Shiva Swaminathashambho. Shankara Shiva Shankara Shiva Shankara Shambho Shankara Shiva Shankara Shiva Shankara Shambho Shankara Shiva Shankara Shiva Shambho Mahadeva Shankara Shiva Shankara Shiva Shambho Mahadeva. Dhamadhamadhamarupade Shankaradhanaadhana Ganta Vade Dhamadhamadhamarupade Shankaradhanaadhana Ganta Vade Harbolinathashambho Shiva Swaminathashambho Harharbolinathashambho Shiva Swaminathashambho. Shankara Shiva Shankara Shiva Shankara Shambho. Let's pray to Lord Shiva. To bless us all, right? We should always be thankful, right, to God who's given us everything that we need. So let's thank Lord Shiva for all that he's given and let's pray to him all the time so that he protects us and blesses us all the time. Now let's go to the last bajan. Ishvara Paramishvara. Shall we start this? Ishvara Paramishvara Jaya Jaya Shiva Har Har Jagadeeshvara. Ishvara Paramishvara Ishvara Paramishvara Jaya Jaya Shiva Har Har Jagadeeshvara. Jaya Jaya Shiva Har Har Jagadeeshvara. Ishvara Paramishvara Ishvara Paramishvara Jaya Jaya Shiva Har Har Jagadeeshvara. Jaya Jaya Shiva Har Har Jagadeeshvara. Sarvaloka Pallaka Dharmaloka Pooshaka Sarvaloka Pallaka Dharmaloka Pooshaka Jaya Jaya Shiva Har Har Mahadeeshvara. Jaya Jaya Shiva Har Har Mahadeeshvara. Ishvara Paramishvara Jaya Jaya Shiva Har Har Mahadeeshvara. Kalla Kalla Lokapalla Vilasadhi Shvara Naakaloka Nagaloka Rakshakeshvara. Kalla Kalla Lokapalla Vilasadhi Shvara Naakaloka Nagaloka Rakshakeshvara. Vidiharinuta Ishvara Yati Gananuta Ishvara Vidiharinuta Ishvara Yati Gananuta Ishvara Jaya Jaya Shiva Har Har Mahadeeshvara. Ishvara Paramishvara Ishvara Paramishvara Jaya Jaya Shiva Har Har Jagadeeshvara. Jaya Jaya Shiva Har Har Jagadeeshvara. Sarvaloka Pallaka Dharmaloka Pooshaka Sarvaloka Pallaka Dharmaloka Pooshaka Jaya Jaya Shiva Har Har Mahadeeshvara. Jaya Jaya Shiva Har Har Mahadeeshvara. Ishvara Paramishvara Jaya Jaya Shiva Har Har Mahadeeshvara. Kalla Kalla Lokapalla Vilasadhi Shvara Naakaloka Nagaloka Rakshakeshvara. Kalla Kalla Lokapalla Vilasadhi Shvara Naakaloka Nagaloka Rakshakeshvara. Vidiharinuta Ishvara Yati Gananuta Ishvara Vidiharinuta Ishvara Yati Gananuta Ishvara Jaya Jaya Shiva Har Har Mahadeeshvara. Ishvara Paramishvara Jaya Jaya Shiva Har Har Jagadeeshvara. Jaya Jaya Shiva Har Har Jagadeeshvara. Jaya Jaya Shiva Har Har Jagadeeshvara. So this completes the chanting of the Shlokas and the singing of the bajans. Now it's time to hear from you all, the little students. So are you all ready? So let's start with the Shlokas, okay? So when I call out the name, please raise your hand in the Zoom app, okay? Only they have to raise your hand. So let's start with the first Shloka, that is the Shivastotram. So do we have, are all those assigned for this Shloka, please raise your hand so that I know who is there. So let's get started with Yasank. Yasank is Bingumala. Are you there Yasank? Yeah, so let's... Can you unmute Yasank?
Okay.
Ha, just wait a minute, wait a minute, ha. Can you start? Can you start chanting?
Okay.
Very good. Thank you so much Yasank is Bingumala from Bangalore. Next, we, do we have Prisha? Prisha Kurtakoti from Bahrain. Prisha, can you please raise your hand? Ah, she's here.
Okay.
Prisha, can you talk? Are you there? Yes, can you chant?
Yes.
Prisha, please start. Shivastotram.
Okay. Namaste astu Bhagavan Vishveshwaraaya Mahadevaya Trayambakaya Trikagnikalaaya Kalagni Rudraya Neelakantaya Mrtjun Jayaya Sarveshwaraaya Sadashivaya Shreeman Mahadevaya Namaha.
Very good, wonderful Prisha. Thank you so much, this is Prisha from Bahrain. Thank you so much. Next, can we have Amira Kethipalli from Bangalore? Amira, are you there? Amira, raise your hand in the Zoom app. Are you in the name of Archana? Yeah. Are you there, Amira?
Yes ma'am.
Ha, can you start?
Namaste astu Bhagavan Vishveshwaraaya Mahadevaya Trayambakaya Trikagnikalaaya Kalagni Rudraya Neelakantaya Mrtjun Jayaya Sarveshwaraaya Sadashivaya Shreeman Mahadevaya Namaha.
Very good, wonderful, thank you so much, Amira. Now let's go to the next Shloka, that is the Mahamritjunjay mantra. Can we have Adya Imar from Chennai? Adya... Can you unmute Adya? Adya, can you try to unmute?
Yes ma'am.
Yeah, yeah, can you start?
Om Trayambakam Yajamahé Sugandhim Pushtivardhannam Urvarukamivabhandhanan Mrtior Mukshiyamamritat.
Thank you so much, that was wonderful, Adya. Thank you so much, that was Adya from Chennai. Next, we have Adya Devraj from Bangalore. This is Adya, yes. Adya, are you able to unmute, Adya? Adya Devraj?
Ma'am, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can hear you, yeah, start Adya.
Om Trayambakam Yajamahé Sugandhim Pushtivardhannam Urvarukamivabhandhanan Mrtior Mukshiyamamritat.
Wonderful, very good, thank you. Please mute yourself. Now let's go to the Karacharana Kritam Shloka. Krish is Kautur, are you there? Uh, Krish, Krish, have you raised your hand? Krish, can you unmute?
Yes ma'am.
Yeah, start.
Karacharana Kritamva Kayajamkarmajamba Shavanayanajamba Manasamba Paradhama Vihitamavihitamva Sarvamye Tatkshamasva Jaya Jaya Karunabhde Shri Mahadeva Shambho.
Thank you so much Krish, that was wonderful. Please mute yourself. Next, can, is Charvi here? I don't see her raising her hand. Please raise your hand Charvi and Bhavisha if you're there. Yeah, Bhavisha is there, okay, I'll call Bhavisha first. Bhavisha, be ready to unmute. Bhavisha, are you able to unmute?
Yes ma'am.
Yeah, can you start please?
Karacharana Kritamva Kayajamkarmajamba Shavanayanajamba Manasamba Paradhama Vihitamavihitamva Sarvamye Tatkshamasva Jaya Jaya Karunabhde Shri Mahadeva Shambho.
Thank you so much, that was wonderful. Bhavisha from Bangalore. Now next, Charvi S. Can you unmute Charvi?
Yes ma'am.
Start.
Karacharana Kritamva Kayajamkarmajamba Shavanayanajamba Manasamba Paradhama Vihitamavihitamva Sarvamye Tatkshamasva Jaya Jaya Karunabhde Shri Mahadeva Shambho.
Wonderful, thank you so much Charvi. Please mute yourself. So this completes the Shloka, so let's go to the songs, okay? The bajans. Let's start with Om Shiva Om Shiva. Samanve Patel, are you there Samanve Patel? Please raise your hand, please put your name. Samanve... Samanve Patel, I don't, ah, yeah, yeah, you're there, you're there, yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Can you unmute now, Samanve?
Yes ma'am.
Ha, she's going to sing Om Shiva Om Shiva bajan for us. You can start, Samanve, start.
Namaste Om Shiva Om Shiva Parashiva Om Shiva Om Shiva Parashiva Om Kara Shiva Tavasharanam Om Kara Shiva Tavasharanam. Namami Shankara Bajami Shankara Namami Shankara Bajami Shankara Umamaheshwara Tavasharanam Umamaheshwara Tavasharanam. Gauri Shankara Shambho Shankara Gauri Shankara Shambho Shankara Saambhasada Shiva Tavasharanam Saambhasada Shiva Tavasharanam. Om Shiva Om Shiva Parashiva Om Kara Shiva Tavasharanam Namami Shankara Bajami Shankara Umamaheshwara Tavasharanam. Gauri Shankara Shambho Shankara Saambhasada Shiva Tavasharanam Saambhasada Shiva Tavasharanam Saambhasada Shiva Tavasharanam.
Wonderful, big round of applause for Samanve. Now, we have Anika. Anika, are you there? Anika Kethipalli, please unmute. Thank you so much Samanve Patel. Anika, did you unmute, Anika?
Yes ma'am.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Anika is going to sing Shankara Shiva Shankara bajan for us. Please start.
Shankara Shiva Shankara Shiva Shankara Shambho Shankara Shiva Shankara Shiva Shankara Shambho Shankara Shiva Shankara Shiva Shambho Mahadeva. Shankara Shiva Shankara Shiva Shambho Mahadeva. Damadhamadhamarupade Shankaradhanaadhana Ganta Vade Dhamadhamadhamarupade Shankaradhanaadhana Ganta Vade Harbolinathashambho Shiva Swaminathashambho Harharbolinathashambho Shiva Swaminathashambho. Shankara Shiva Shankara Shiva Shankara Shambho Shankara Shiva Shankara Shiva Shankara Shambho Shankara Shiva Shankara Shiva Shambho Mahadeva. Shankara Shiva Shankara Shiva Shambho Mahadeva. Shankara Shiva Shankara Shiva Shankara Shambho. Damadhamadhamarupade Shankaradhanaadhana Ganta Vade Dhamadhamadhamarupade Shankaradhanaadhana Ganta Vade Harbolinathashambho. Dhamma 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 rupache Shankara ghana ghana ghanta vache. Har boli nata shambho Shiva swami nata shambho. Har har boli nata shambho Shiva swami nata shambho. Shankara Shiva Shankara Shiva Shankara shambho.
Wonderful, Anika, thank you so much. Now, we have Vishnu, can you unmute Vishnu, please? Vishnu MB, can you please unmute?
Yes ma'am.
Yeah, we can't see you, Vishnu, wait, 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 adjust your camera, bring it down. We can't see your face also properly, please adjust your camera, bring it down, yeah, yeah. And don't sing, don't sing the second time because we don't have so much time, just sing once, okay? And stop it.
Jaya jaya Shiva har har jagadishvara. Ishvara Paramishvara. Jaya jaya Shiva har har jagadishvara. Sarvaloka palaka dharmaloka pochaka. Jaya jaya Shiva har har mahadeswara. Ishvara Paramishvara. Ishvara Paramishvara. Jaya jaya Shiva har har jagadishvara. Kalakala lokapala vilasadishvara. Naakaloka nagaloka rakshakeshvara. Vidiharinuta Ishvara yatigananuta Ishvara. Vidiharinuta Ishvara yatigananuta Ishvara. Jaya jaya Shiva har har mahadeswara. Ishvara Paramishvara. Jaya jaya Shiva har har jagadishvara. Ishvara Paramishvara. Jaya jaya Shiva har har jagadishvara. Sarvaloka palaka dharmaloka rakshaka. Sarvaloka palaka dharmaloka rakshaka. Jaya jaya Shiva har har mahadeswara. Ishvara Paramishvara. Jaya jaya Shiva har har jagadishvara. Kalakala lokapala vilasadishvara. Naakaloka nagaloka rakshakeshvara. Vidiharinuta Ishvara yatigananuta Ishvara. Vidiharinuta Ishvara yatigananuta Ishvara. Jaya jaya Shiva har har mahadeswara. Ishvara Paramishvara. Ishvara Paramishvara. Jaya jaya Shiva har har jagadishvara.
That was wonderful, thank you so much Vishnu. So this was indeed a very special day. It was Shiva Ratri and we all together chanted the shlokas of Shiva, sang the bhajans of Shiva, right? Let's all pray one last time to Lord Shiva to bless us all and we should, we should always thank, let's thank him for all that he's given us and let's pray that he blesses all of us with good health, wealth and prosperity, okay? Saying that, I'm going to say goodbye to all of you.